Recording? Okay. Great. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Fairfield Conservation Commission Inland Wetlands Agency Meeting of March 1st, 2023. It's 7:03, I think, if I can see. I'll take the call. Myself, Lucas Thomas, I'm here. Daphne Bowen's here. Richard Boucher is here, he's online. Gerald Delessie is here. Ryan McCann is here. Jay Fain is here, he's online. You guys can hear us up there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Amanda Burton's Campbell is... I don't see her online. Peter Hood is here. Kato Mahoney's here. And Ted Booksinger is here. Okay, so no need to appoint alternates. We have a full slate. There are minutes from the February 1st, 2023 Inland Wetlands Agency Meeting. Anybody have any comments or any corrections to those minutes? No? Have a motion to approve them? Jerry and Ryan, seconds. Very good. Number four. Public hearings. And it's, number one, it's continued WP-22-2... I'm sorry, 322 William Kenny Associates LLC, 2717 North Street, MAP 165, Parcel 29. Replace existing residential driveway crossing within a regulated area. But I think this says, there's a request to continue this to the next meeting?
Correct. The department received a call and correspondence, the email today, which I circulated with the requests for postponing or delaying.
Okay.
Some revisions forthcoming.
All right, so it's within the timeframe. It says that our 65-day extension may be provided, so a further public hearing continuation May 12th, 2023 is possible. A potential continuation date is April 5th, 2023. So I guess we can just put on that the next meeting? Okay. I don't think we need a motion for that. Or just move it. Moving on to five applications for discussion. Number one. WP-22-293 Shaw, 137 Woods End Road, MAP 145, Parcel 70. Corrective action, replant stream bank with native plantings. Activity within a regulated area. Last day for public hearing decision is March 10th, 2023. Last regular meeting prior is today, March 1st, 2023. But the staff recommends tabling application pending written time extension from applicant and payment of application fees. If the commission or the agency will recall, this is the woman who did all this work in not a great way, but then she really came about and cleaned it up, much to her credit. I think she's having some sort of financial issue, but I just want to make sure she's in contact with staff. Is she?
She is, she was today. She sent a late afternoon email requesting the extension from the agency that would give her, to avoid the application stalling, and give her some more time to pay the application fee that was decided upon.
Okay.
So she did circulate that email today.
Okay, great.
Can we ask the town attorney if it's okay that she pays on a payment plan?
I did offer that option, splitting the, it was 900...
1,020.
1,020.
With the state fee.
1,020, in two installments. She seemed agreeable to that so far, but, you know, still, we haven't received any money yet.
Okay. I'd like to give her some more time. Can, yes, anybody have any questions or any other comments? Anybody want to do a motion to let her continue this for another, I guess, month?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Jay makes it, and Debbie, Daphne seconded. All right, now, on to number two. WP-22-258 Fairfield Housing Corporation, 980 High Street, MAP 77, Parcel 340. Construction of a 40-unit assisted multifamily affordable housing development within a regulated area. The public hearing was closed on February 1st, 2023. The last day for decision, it's March 8th. Last regular meeting prior is, well, today, March 1st, 2023. Staff recommends that decision be rendered with applicable conditions if approved. So, well, we're in the discussion phase, but to discuss, I would need a motion to either approve or deny. And then somebody seconds, and then we discuss, and we go from there.
I'll make a motion to deny the application without prejudice.
Without prejudice, okay.
I'll second that motion. I'll second it.
Rick, okay. Did you guys get that? I don't know if you saw it over there. Yep, okay. Discussion.
I'd like to make a statement if I may.
You know what? Before you do that, I'm gonna ask, only because this has been going on for, I think, three, maybe even four meetings. If, if any member who wasn't here for some of the meetings in person, who, have you reviewed the documents and the video on the days you weren't here?
I, Daphne Bowen, was not here for the February meeting, but I read the meeting minutes and listened to the video.
Okay, thank you.
And Rick Boucher missed December 7th, but this afternoon, I've read the minutes and I reviewed the two-hour video.
Okay, thank you.
I was here for all the, all four of the hearings.
Excellent, and I think everybody else that is here was all four.
I watched the video of the one I missed, and I was here in December, so.
Okay. Okay. Very good. All right, so everybody's in a position to be able to discuss now. All right, it's open for discussion, folks.
Look, I'd like to make a statement if I may, and I may have to kick out of the meeting early, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I believe the commission has the, has little responsibility towards flora and fauna, some as it interests a water course. I think our group is not responsible to the 14 abutting property owners. And I also believe that our group is not responsible for traffic on High Street, the flow of it. I believe our responsibility lies in wetlands protection. And this project will disturb approximately 75% of that site, which abuts wetlands, designated wetlands. And I believe that will have severe effects on the wetlands. Also, the 13 drainage structures that are slated for this project, which will require diligent maintenance, will ultimately, and I think drastically, affect the wetlands area that's in question. So I am opposed to this project.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Well, it's not time to vote yet, but we got where you are, just in, just so we know where you are. Okay.
Thank you.
Any further? You know what? Any, any? Daphne?
Since I made the motion, I'll just say that I don't feel that the applicant has brought forth any feasible and prudent alternatives to the project, even those that might relieve them from the restrictions that this board, this commission sets forth. And so I, until those feasible and prudent alternatives are presented, then I don't feel we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners? Anyone else? Peter?
I'm gonna just chime in quickly, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay.
Hold on for just a minute, because I really do, while, while the controlling person on the thing is doing that, I'm gonna let Peter go, and then Jay can go, so.
Look, I'll tell you, I really want this to succeed. I feel very strongly about that. The town needs it, but I'm not convinced that this is the right location. As far as the applicant goes, I'm applicant blind, the way I look at this. I think Fairfield Housing Corporation, a lot of their position depends on zoning issues, it's just not relevant to me. We're here as conservation, so none of that is important to me at all. I actually, in terms of the alternatives, I think this was, to my mind, a better alternative, which was never even discussed. What I like about it is that there's a point where this stops, and the activity...
Can you tell us what that, what is it that, what are you looking at?
This is, let's see, it's a preliminary site plan, it's dated November 2 of '22. That's about it. It basically shows it as a six-story, single building with the parking in the front. What I prefer it for is that the activity doesn't extend beyond the back of the building. What would really be facing the wetland would be back. Now, there is a terrace, but I feel that there would be not much activity going on. I also feel that the parking is away. I'm not persuaded by the applicant's position that they don't need to provide a prudent alternative, that's just not acceptable to me. As far as, I remember there was a discussion that if we went into one building, we would have to use steel. Personally, I'm not persuaded that 50 units would have to be, you might want to pass that down. It would have to be 50. I don't find that a waste of it all. These days, I'll tell you, if you look up the price trends, steel is actually cheaper than wood now. We call it cold-form steel, it's, it's 25% recycled material, it can be recycled, so there's environmental advantage, doesn't emit VOCs, there's less waste, settles less, so there's no maintenance, or doesn't warp or crack, there's no mold. I mean, long-term, the costs of using steel, I think, less. The insurance costs are less for a building that's constructed with steel, because there's a lot less maintenance. My, one of the things I'm concerned about is the P804209. I've been to the site quite a few times. There are animals that live there. They're not transversing the property, they're not temporary. The statute defines it as aquatic plants or animal life in habitat. Habitat means an area or environment in which an organism or biological population normally lives or occurs. Doesn't really have to live there, but it occurs. I'm concerned about salt. I mentioned that a lot. I am not persuaded by the applicant's position that the salt will infiltrate. There's many different kinds of salt that they use, but I think when you have salt, that's eventually gonna make its way into the, into the wetlands. The salt replaces minerals that would otherwise be absorbed by plants, it takes the place of them, so the plant life is affected. And I also think the salt takes the place of water. So the water, not necessarily water table, but we don't know what the weather's gonna be like, but the water level available to plants is affected. So that's important to me, and that's one of the reasons I like this plan better, is at least the parking is farther distant from the wetlands itself. Look, I'll tell you, part of my problem with this is, is the presentation. I think it's been aggressive and scolding and hostile. I think the quote, and I'll quote, inland wetland and water corpse commissions are not little environmental protection agencies. I really took a lot, I took strong issue with that. I don't like that kind of comment. The Association of Conservation Inland Wetlands Commissions does say, and I mentioned this before, that the duties and abilities given to commissions by the state better fit the role of conservation consciousness. I think that's what, so, I think we've had letters that have said, "We're not fair," that we're violating the housing regulations, that there were assertions that a commissioner didn't read the application. There was assertions that several commissioners, quote, "made patently false statements and representations." And most important to me, that withholding or delaying of dissemination of the Trinkus report, again, violating state, you know, this has just been too much for me. It's, I feel like, for a long time, we've been subject to scolding. I think that a lot of the communication and the way this has been presented has been intended to stifle the discussion here and impart a chilling effect. And I'm really uncomfortable with that.
Good, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fain?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reviewed Section 10.2 of our ordinance, which is the criteria for decisions, pretty thoroughly. I've listened to four nights of testimony, and expert testimony, including that from our own experts that we hired. And I heard all the testimony from the neighboring property owners. In my experience and my evaluation, I did not hear any testimony that would directly relate to a direct impact to the wetland and water course resources, which is our bailiwick in terms of protection. In fact, we've heard from both of our experts, the environmental expert, Dr. Clemmons, that there would be no impact to the wetland and water course in terms of wetland-dependent wildlife. And we also heard from our engineer that the stormwater management system, in his professional opinion, would not have an adverse impact to the wetland and water course resource. Based on my knowledge of the statutes and my knowledge of the case law regarding inland wetlands and water courses regulations, I don't feel I could vote to deny this application. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Any comments? Yes, Commissioner McCann?
I think that we did receive some information regarding the analysis of feasible and prudent alternatives. We heard that feasible means economically viable in light of the social benefits, and based on sound engineering principles. There was testimony that the project is really not viable with a lesser number of units. I think probably everyone on the panel probably would prefer to have a lesser density on the site. I mean, I think that would solve a lot of, a lot of issues. It would create a bigger, a larger buffer. It would create for more sheet flow over land, more, you know, renovation of the stormwater. Obviously, stormwater is a huge issue for a site that's, you know, three-quarters, if not more, in previous. But I think at the end of the day, oh, and one other thing, initially, I was concerned with the, I think I was the only one who voted on the last application, if I'm not mistaken. Initially, I was concerned about the stormwater detention basin in that northeastern corner, especially to the extent that it would impact that, that, that buffer area over there, and also just sort of the only remaining area of, you know, native woodland there. But I was, I was actually happy to see that there was a revision on that stormwater detention basin. I think the revised plan is a, is a better plan. I don't think it's, it's ideal, but I think it's, it's a better plan. And ultimately, I think, kind of like along lines of what Jay said, I think, you know, my job is to decide based on, you know, substantial evidence before us. Have we determined, can we determine that there is a significant unmitigated impact to the wetland? And I think we've, you know, we've hired Dr. Clemmons, we've hired David Ginter, we've had a engineering peer review, and ultimately, I just don't think that there was any evidence that there would be a significant environmental impact, so, although I don't think that it's an ideal plan, I think I would be inclined to approve it.
Thank you. I just make one quick follow-up on that. All right, hold on, are you, are you done?
Yes.
Sure. Sure, Commissioner Fain?
Yeah, I just want to jump in and agree. I did not agree with the applicant's first position that there was no feasible improvement in alternative, and that they did not have to supply one. But through the whole process, we did develop what I consider a feasible improvement alternative that drastically reduced the impacts to the wetlands and water courses. I felt that the original plan, if I was to be voting on that tonight, I thought there would be substantive evidence that there would be an adverse impact to wetlands and water courses. But with this new feasible improvement alternative, I agree. I just can't say that there's any substantial evidence to point to impact to wetlands and water courses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we setting a precedent that we're supposed to come up with a reasonable?
No, no, we're not. We're, this is just a discussion.
I mean, I would, I would love to just respond to Brian's comments, which are, I think what would have been helpful for me would be not for the applicant to say and state that there are new feasible alternatives, and to, and to claim that they had investigated that, and that there aren't, and the reasons why they're not, but rather to demonstrate to us what those feasible and prudent alternatives are, and to show us that they're either economically unviable, or, you know, from a building standpoint, or whatever the reason is. But I never felt like they gave us that courtesy to be able to see for ourselves the details behind what makes, and, and, and a number of times, we suggested, "Why not just clear yourself from the burden of this permission?"
Right.
And, and just, you know, move it back 20 feet.
Yeah.
So, for that reason, I just feel that, I really feel like the, the burden of the applicant to, to demonstrate that there are no other feasible or prudent alternatives was...
If I may, Chairman, I, I just want to say, this is open discussion, and I understand that. And what Commissioner Hood brought up was great, but that's not what's before us. What's before us is 40 units that would impact 75% of this property. So the open discussion is great, but as Amanda just said, at no time do the applicant give us an opportu, give an opportunity to show a smaller footprint or less units, at no time.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, I'm sorry, any other commissioners before I, I'll state something, and if anybody wants to follow, that's fine, too. Yeah, my, it's already an 830G property, right? So for the commissioners who might not know what 830G is, it's, an 830G property kind of bypasses our zoning to a certain degree, and, and you don't need permission to do certain things when you do that. And I, I, on a, on a business standpoint, at least for, for a developer, why would you want to submit yourself to us? If you, if you were to move this project, kind of like this one here, that, that Commissioner Hood had, it wouldn't be in an upland review area, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in our purview. We wouldn't be able to stop them from putting up this six-story, 50-unit apartment building. So, I mean, I think there is a feasible improvement alternative that doesn't even require us to make any decision, because we wouldn't be able to make any decision. So I, I think that, that kind of, it's a disingenuous statement to say there's no feasible improvement alternative, when, when there, there are. And taking the application that was provided here this time, the application that was provided to us from day one until four meetings later, it's not the same application. So, things happen, whether it was our third-party people that looked at Redness and Mead, or, or something else, it changed. So there are, there were alternatives to it. And I think one more step would have just simply been, do something along these lines, you know, not necessarily this, but I understand what you're trying to say. There is something there, because ultimately, I think it will affect the, the wetlands and the water courses, whether it's the salts, or the stormwater. And I understand Commissioner Boucher's comments of the percentage of the whole thing, but we really are only kind of focused on, on the one part, the, the wetlands area, and then anything that's in the upland review area that affects the wetlands area. But within a few feet of their development, we couldn't say anything. Now we're here, and we can say something. And it is up, up to the applicant to, to show us why, and, and whether we, we agree with it, or we don't agree with what they provided. The community had, had provided some stuff to us. There's this, Mr. Trinkus' report that's in there. It's a report, whether they, the applicant's people, you know, shut that down, Mr. Trinkus shut their stuff down, so there are opposing views to how this affects the wetlands. And so I think that opens the door to a feasible improvement alternative, and that's, that's where I am with it.
I agree, and, and you know, when we started, the plan was presented to us as done, perfect, I'm not gonna budge. And even the public comments were revolving a bit about that, every suggestion that was made. I mean, I remember even I made a cockamamie suggestion, "Could you just move the whole thing, you know, towards the street a little bit?" Everything, you know, and if it was perfect, then why has it been altered?
Right.
And for me, you know, the statute says, provided a mere showing of expense will not necessarily mean that an alternative is improved. I don't care about the finances, I mean, that sounds harsh.
Right.
But we haven't been given anything, we, we were told, "No, I can't do that, because it doesn't fit in with my cost metrics." But that's something that anyone is gonna be able to do at any time.
Yeah.
Just come before the commission and say, "Well, it doesn't fit in with my cost metrics, and therefore, I don't have to provide an alternative."
Judge.
That's, that's not acceptable to me.
I'll just add that we have a process, and that process is important. It's a reason why we have a process, just, just like in a legal arena, there's a process, and, and I think, I just, I think that we have that process for a reason.
Very good. Yes, Commissioner?
As far as the, I just think personally, as far as the amendments to the application, I mean, I think that is demonstrative of alternatives. And I don't, I just, I guess I just see it from a different angle, in that I wouldn't want to dissuade or dissentify someone from, from, from making those amendments. Even if it is midstream, I think there were, there were amendments that were made at the request or suggestion of, of our experts at most times. And so, just my personal feeling is, I think that those were alternatives, and I think in some ways, it should be, you know, commended, that they were, that they were followed and, and, you know, incorporated into the, into the design.
Yeah, but those are costs. Now, I'm not even sure where we are as a, as a town, as a town board, who bears those costs, right? I think there was an email that our staff sent out today, it's about $18,000. So whether this application gets approved or denied, who do we ask? Do we pay for it? Do we go to Brenda's office and say, "Give us a check"? Do we ask the applicants to pay for it? I mean, I don't know what we do there.
I think we did ask the applicants to pay for it.
There, there's been no response. There was no response.
Yeah, we asked.
Yeah, so, and, and I'm not... You know, so, so I don't know, and we needed that, right? Because like you just said, if we didn't have that, then the application that was presented to us, was, I, I, you know, we wouldn't, well, I don't know. I don't, Jay, Jay might know more than all of us, but I don't know anything about this stuff.
Well, absent the prodding by this commission, those revisions wouldn't have happened.
Right.
They're not magic.
I think the money we spent was well-spent, in that it's part of the process, routinely hire outside experts, that happens at every commission. I think the only flaw that we have is our regulations this time don't explicitly cover that scenario.
Right, right. Okay, any other questions, and any other comments?
I want to say, I was at the, the, the annual meeting for inland wetland commissioners this year, and Janet Brooks, who is a big attorney for inland wetlands, she jumped up and down and said, "Our job is the activity, not the business, not the people, to look at the activity." So I think that, you know, that is what we're doing, is we're looking at the activity, so...
Like applicant blind, I...
Right.
For me...
It is, right.
Fairfield Corporation's never been part of, I mean, I'm troubled, I'm frustrated, I'm... Ousing Corporation has never been part of, I mean, I'm troubled, I'm frustrated, I'm distraught.
We don't, we don't regulate people and we don't regulate business. We regulate the activity, how the activity impacts the wetlands.
And one thing that's frustrating me is it's just too vague. The assertion that the cost is prohibitive, the assertion that suddenly this has to go to fifty units, which makes it more terrifying and unappealing. There's just nothing was given to us to examine. I I'm frustrated by that.
Okay. Anything further, commissioners?
Not seeing the whole picture. We can't see the whole picture, right? Beneficial ownership, the financial underpinnings of the project are clearly having an impact on feasibility from their perspective that we don't see. And there's little that we can do with respect to that. I would say that the applicant's been very responsive to the things that we've asked to have done. Our expert came down in favor of it being, you know, having no impact on the wetlands. So from a responsibility, from a responsiveness perspective, I I think they've done a good job. But not seeing the whole picture makes it very difficult for us to make a decision that is going to be germane to what happens in that area. You know, who's to say they're not going to sell the property five years from now? They talk about, you know, we're going to be maintaining it, but the people who live in that area are concerned about, well, what if they sell it off, you know, at a later date? What's going to happen to the maintenance? There's nothing, yeah, again, so we don't see the whole thing.
For forty years, it has to be maintained as, for forty years, it has to be maintained as affordable. That was my understanding. Whether it changes.
Right now, as it stands, HUD is forty years, right?
But Ted, how do we, I mean, how do we get the information? Your your point is really important, but absent us saying, give me the, you know, more, was it the applicant's responsibility, maybe offer something to persuade me?
From my perspective, I don't understand why building on an untouched piece of land or relatively untouched piece of land is easier than going in and finding a property that could be refurbished and brought up to speed. Because the other thing that's happened is the public is much more aware of the value of untouched land. You know, from a wildlife perspective, you know, ten years ago, they wouldn't have cared. All right. I think these days, with everything that's going on, everyone's very, very focused on that. And whether it's nimbyism or not, you know, being in the neighborhood, they do care about the wildlife and they care about, you know, climate change and the impacts. So I think eight thirty G was designed not taking that into account. There's been a change in public perception around the value of unspoiled virgin land. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see the incentive thirty G changed to make it more viable to re- redevelop something as opposed to going into fresh land. But again, that's not my purview.
And I don't think that's the purview of us.
Right, it's not.
I think that, you know, we have to kind of stick, you know, not business and everything else, it's got to be, we have to stick with activity.
No, I agree. I I agree.
As the public act goes, one thing I I am going to hammer is is that I've been there six to seven times. And I I I put in photographs, the deer, the the three deer, I'm not talking about the twenty that were mentioned, they live there. Because the last time they're in the photographs that I submitted, it was eleven thirty on Sunday. That's not a time when deer are lying around. So they live there. I don't know why. It's, to me, not that great of a spot. But I'm talking for myself where I'm coming from and attaching to the provisions of the public act to reach into wildlife part of it. They live there. I've seen other animals. I've seen a fox, but my presumption is that they're transitory.
Okay.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, if the agency members see fit to deny this application, which, you know, will be determined, generally held that the agency should provide some direction to the applicant in terms of how the project should be altered and changed in the in a future application. That that was done in the last denial. And I think that if we do move in that direction, that we should include some some information and guidance as far as that's concerned.
Absolutely.
Sure. I agree.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else? Close discussion? All right, we can close discussion. And now the motion on the floor is to deny the application without prejudice. Would anybody like to amend it in any way? If not, then those those voting yes would be voting to deny the application. So all those in favor of the motion to deny the application? Rick Boucher, Peter, myself, Dabney, Jerry Alessi, those voting in favor of the opposed to the motion would be voting, so it's Jay and Brian. So the application does not pass, the motion passes, the application is denied. And maybe we can have staff review it and see what can will.
Okay.
Okay. Let's, where are we? Bills. Build and bond releases, number one, WP twenty twenty dash twenty-one dash oh four, Weber nine five seven, Fairfield Woods Road, assessment map seventy-four, parcel ten. Fill wetlands from new driveway crossing, construct new pool and patio within a regulated area. Request of Lucas Papagena for final release of fifteen thousand nine hundred. Staff recommends final bond release of fifteen thousand nine hundred. Did they do what they were supposed to do?
Yes, so they did the driveway crossing. They have not done the pool and patio, but the owners that took this out have since sold the house and moved. So the big part, which was the wetland crossing, they did, they've, they keep it in, they've been growing for two seasons. Everything is fine. The permit is still valid, so the new owners can do the pool if they want to, but they would post a new bond for that.
Okay.
The big part of the bond is things.
It's all, it's all been done?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anybody want to do a motion to release?
Sure.
Peter, anybody second? Dabney, all right, all in favor of releasing? Hi. Hi. Jay, Jay, were you okay with that? I didn't see.
Yeah, fine, yes.
Okay, okay. That's unanimous, that's good. Seven, legal enforcement actions continued, number one, continued show cause here, Janine Norwood, one twenty, Wakeman Lane, Southport. Map two forty-six, parcel five C, clearing of wetlands vegetation and deposition of material within a wetland. Anything there?
Update is the department received an application online the other day. Sarah is working with the applicant to fill in the gaps of what's missing. But there is action as far as receiving the application itself and a planting plan.
They are submitting an application fee?
Not yet.
No, I just, we, they submit everything and then we calculate what it would be and send it to them. So we just sent that today.
When when we say the applicant, is it just this, the the homeowner or does she have a team of people? Do we know who she's working with?
It was Bruce Jackson.
Okay, good. Okay, good, good. All right.
Jackson's attorney or?
Yeah. Number two, continued Cynthia Amali, forty-seven, Quaker Lane, map twelve, parcel three eighteen. Conducted filling, grading landscaping of a map, wetland and regulated area out of permit. I think this, well.
Also similar situation, recently received the application online for a permit inland wetland permit. That was just within the last day or two. So again, Sarah is working through what's been received, what's complete, what's not.
Okay, so same situation.
Same situation.
Good. Continue that. Number three, Juan Velez, eight sixteen street roadmap, one seventy-seven, parcel one seventy-eight A. Conducted land clearing and tree removal without a permit. That's new.
This is a new one, new one, but old one.
Yeah.
This was a violation that began before I got here, when there was no director with the assistance of SLR. Sarah and and Meg Raymond visited the site due to clearing of a lot across the street from, is that Oliver?
Yeah.
Oliver's Nursery, next to our open space. This has gone, slipped through the cracks back then. So when it came about, I sent the, I sent the order to address the violation.
Yeah, Joyce Shaw's old house.
I'm sorry?
Joyce Shaw's old house, right next to the open space.
No, no, it's, it's the, it's the, it's, yeah, no, it's the one that's like directly across from Oliver's driveway. It sits down because of depression.
Right.
Right next to the entrance.
Yeah. There's no.
Right, I know, okay. Isn't that Joyce Shaw's old house?
Joyce's house is across the river.
Okay.
From, from this house.
It's true, it's true. They haven't done anything.
I don't know what I've been looking.
No, no, yep.
Yeah, I think we should aggressively pursue that. It's a real mess over there.
Okay.
Yeah, spoke with Mr. Velez in the office on Friday. He originally had him scheduled for tonight for a show cause, but he's working out of state. So he agreed to come before a show cause hearing before you guys next month.
Awesome. Well, well, okay, but that between now and then, is he just coming in to say, I got, I I know I violated something? Or have you said anything to him? You should be a little, he should have a little bit extra than just coming in.
Yeah.
I mean, if.
I I have to have the show cause because of the order, order to abate the violation.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll see what he's got to say then.
Next month. Yeah.
Okay, all right. I I guess you're right with that, but I'm I'm more of Jay on this one. It's like, it's been two years.
And that's why I sent the order instead of another NOV, which, you know, went unanswered, so.
There's that monthly flurry, just the day of the meetings.
Yeah, everything happens.
All right, so staff reports, reports from the Conservation Commission, CWC permit, applications received nine. Oh, there we go. Notice of violation issued, chief man bonds release sixteen. So any, anything you want to add regarding any of that? No, we'll see them all. Okay, there are no sidewalks for March?
Correct.
Okay.
And I had one other point, just as a reminder, Kate reminded me earlier that the Connecticut Bar Association Land Use Law Seminars, Saturday, the eleventh, I had forgotten. So thank you.
I got the, I got the.
The binder, yeah.
Binder in the mail. I was like, what have I signed up for?
Actually, it's fine. It's, it's, it's.
They say it's really very, you know, like, it's, it's, it's still worthwhile, so I'm excited.
I did it last year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, and I think I saw that Tim sent that proposed legislation. They're going to make it like every two years, somebody has to do it. So if I'm still here, I'm.
Tim, if I may go back, there there are no sidewalks for March?
It's great. No.
Okay.
I think the conference, what you're going to have to do, I think the best thing to do is cast to your TV. I want to sit on the couch.
Yeah.
I can't do nine hours sitting in a chair in front of this thing.
Test it.
All right, so we're nine.
Excuse me, Luke, there are no sidewalks for March. Did I miss that?
No.
That is correct. There are no side, there are no sidewalks for March.
Right, thank you, guys. I'm going to.
Duty, my friend. You're relieved of your duty. You have nothing in March for you.
Right.
Okay, and I'm going to excuse myself in the meeting officially now. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Yeah, feel better. Feel better, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so nine other update from subcommittee to review proposed inland wetland regulations, fees, changes, schedule require public curing for April fifth, twenty twenty-three. I I've seen those emails go back and forth. I think you guys have done a great, great job. If you want to give us a little bit of of an update, but I really want to get this on, and and that would be really good. All right, so who's the chair? Is it Jay or you guys?
Yeah, we've spent quite, quite a bit of time, as we started this last year. And but we've spent quite a bit of time trying to clean up the the regulations. So they're more user-friendly, both for applicants and also for this commission. There were some issues with setbacks where each watershed had a variable setback, which was difficult to understand and to enforce. And we've eliminated that in favor of a single setback for all wetlands and water courses. We took the, we looked at the fee schedule extensively and modified that so the one that is understandable and easily computable for people like me that don't, that couldn't do it before. And also made it more equitable so that we don't have twenty-five thousand dollar fees for driveways. It may be seen whether this covers the full course or the full expenses in terms of review by the agency staff, but I think it will cover most of it. And also, you know, I think that there's some understanding that when you have a regulation and it's being applied to town people, the town should, you know, pony up some responsibility and have some cover some of the expenses for that. But I think it's a fair fee schedule and and, you know, much easier to understand and much easier to apply. We added a lot of updating to the definitions section to bring it up to, really up to speed with what's out there today. We had, I think, intermittent water course regulate definition, some other definitions to clarify things. There's still, I think it's come up about ninety percent of the way there. There's still some wordsmithing to do just to get the, some of the extra, extra verbiage out of it. So it's just easier to read and easier to do. But I think that's easily done by the April fifth meeting. Tim, do you have anything else to add? Tim and I, you know, spent quite a bit of time on it together.
No, I think you said it all pretty well. The red line version is kind of small in paper, but describes a lot of the, a lot of the changes with more to come. A summary email today, which kind of gave everyone a timeline of what we've done thus far and where we're going. And good to hear that the town attorneys only had two comments. One, to hire SLR to review it, the draft before vote, which I have signed that contract, and the other being pulling the fee structure out of the, out of the regulations as a, and as a standalone document.
Yeah, that, that's what I, I remember we had a brief conversation about that, and I think that would be better. You can discuss section nineteen as application fees and whatever it says as a summary. But I think it should be either an appendix, you know, or an addendum or exhibit, whatever, so that if there, if there would be a change, you don't have to go through the whole thing again. It would simply be something, maybe the permission can do to just up a fee or something.
That gives us, you know, we can analyze where we are after six months in terms of fee collection and make any adjustments that would we would feel necessary if we're deficient in covering our expenses. We also added a section in there, and I think that's important in terms of collecting, establishing an N S U R account and collecting fees for complicated applications. So we'll be covered on that in the future.
Just on recent experience. Yeah, right, right. Thank you, thank you, Jay. And.
Maybe Jay can, I mean, for my learning, why were there variable setbacks? What was, does anybody, can anybody explain to me what the reasoning behind that was?
You know, it's. Yeah, from a previous, you know, previous staff, you could make, I guess you could make a argument that some watersheds by some criteria are more important than another. But those criteria were not contained in our regulations or spelled out in any way, shape or form. So I I think at best it was arbitrary.
Okay, thanks.
It's also important to know along those lines that if you average all of them together, it's only eighty, eighty-two feet, which is. Underserving the resource, in my opinion, since a hundred and sixteen out of the hundred and sixty-nine towns in this state use a hundred foot standard.
Okay. I mean, I see the Mill River, that's quite a reduction. So I just wanted to ask.
We also have a provision in your ordinance, so if there's, you know, our ordinance has provision that if there's some type of activity. That we feel can impact the wetland and water course resource, you can go beyond a hundred feet, but the hundred feet is, as the upland review. Area is a good guideline, it's used extensively through, as Tim said, throughout the state. When you start getting larger than that, then you really start. Stretching the effectiveness and of your ordinance, I believe.
I apologize, I didn't read through all of this, but does it have the, does it reference the Fairfield Supreme Court case? That, that it's, that says that we can regulate any part of the land if there's anything in here?
It does.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
Good, in that section that you're in.
All right, thank you, thank you for all the work that you guys.
Mario.
Very, very commendable, all right. Now, number two is presentation of information on pervious pavement and stormwater management techniques. Oh, hello again.
The preference for the record, we retained Mr. Trinkas to provide us with his presentation and the hard copies of the documents. Memo and, and data that he developed as well as to balance it out, the document. Who didn't get packet from Western and Sampson. From a similar perspective.
I'm Steve Trinkas, I'm a consultant engineer in Southbury, and my expertise is low impact development, so I guess it was probably a couple of meetings, a couple of months ago. The initial review, I Street reached out to me, but. Doing some fact sheets on just fire retention from pavement, which I provided. Generally, most fact sheets are one page, these are about four or five, they, I think will provide the commission with a lot of information to evaluate applications going forward. You know, there's low impact development, there's a. I won't say it's misconception, but, you know, it's a, it's a green system, oh, it's easy, anybody can do it. Except not everybody can do it, we have more examples of what not to do than what to do. So, you know, I've been doing LID since early two thousands, in the mid nineties, I went to a lot of. Professional development seminars at the University of Wisconsin, before LID came out, bits and pieces were being presented by people. And, you know, and then all of a sudden, in two thousand eight, actually, of a LID conference, I was sitting in the audience and. People were asking questions, all of a sudden I realized, geez, I know some of the answers, so it was one of these moments that maybe I know more than I thought. But, you know, in two thousand, I did a small subdivision ridge field, sandy soils, and right, the concept of rain gardens had just come out. And we wanted to do them for the roof drains, you would have thought we were trying to put somebody on the moon, the commission was like, what is a rain guard, how does it work? They let us do them, but it was like really pulling teeth for doing something so simple. Unfortunately, we've come a long way, but there's still a lot of, you know, hurdles elsewhere, and LID, or as I call, L I D, which is Low Impact Sustainable Development. Back in two thousand nine D E P, in part of the watershed, had an industrial fine of close to a million dollars, so they offered it. To towns in the form of grants to go through the regs and at least maybe remove barriers to LID or incorporate LID, well. Town of Holbrook, way up in the northwest corner of the state, thought L I D was low income development. So a little mix on the acronym, but L I D, which actually my wife and daughter came up with, is Low Impact Sustainable Development, and that's really what we're trying to do, is create sustainable development patterns. Projects that work with the land, that minimize the impact to the environmental conditions, both, you know, wetlands and upland areas, and mimic how Mother Nature handles stormwater. So, you know, first we're gonna talk about fire retention systems. This is a depressed landscape area, that's really as complicated as this, most landscape areas are mounded, fire retention are simply on cave. And they're designed to take runoff from impervious areas and, you know, infiltrate it into the underlying soils. Fire retention, rain guard are the same thing. Now, New York State thinks they're different because they have two different design standards. Fire retention is anything over a thousand square feet, a rain garden is less than a thousand square feet of drainage area. And both systems can have an underdrain or without an underdrain, I've been lucky that I've built these. For clients, we don't have underdrains in them, so they're fully infiltrating practices, which is the ideal way to do it, because not only do you clean the water, you also put it back into the ground. If you have an underdrain, you may clean it, but then you're discharging it, you know, somewhere else. So generally, we take impervious area or pervious, you can have lawns drain to them. But they have a limited ponding depth, generally twelve to eighteen inches, although some of the academic professionals at the universities. Say you can have up to three feet, Villanova is one of them that does that, and they've had no problems with it. But in some other towns in Connecticut, where they have stormwater regulations for, you know, L I D, but also for peak rate attenuation, engineers. Design it for water quality, but then design it as a detention pond, and they pond three or four feet of water on top of the fire retention medium, what has happened is. You silt up the fire retention media surface, and then it stops infiltrating, and you basically have a pond, so. They're generally designed for the, you know, water quality storm, which is one inch of rain in twenty-four hours, but we can do it for peak rate attenuation, which I'll chat about a little later. Duration of ponding, you know, originally was no more than seventy-two hours. With West Nile on the eastern side of the state, there was a concern in the ponding water and mosquitoes, and that. Fear has also come to this side of the state, so when I design them, I design them to drain down the ponding water, to drain down. Foot or foot and a half, down to the soil media within twenty-four hours, so if you're a homeowner and it's raining, twenty-four hours after rainstorm, okay, you have a little pond in your yard, but twenty-four. But the next day, it's gone. And that way, you don't have the fear of the West Nile, the media may be saturated, but that's okay, there's no ponding water, and so, you know, I've designed this way because. The homeowner is the end user, if they're not happy with the system, they're gonna fill it in, they're not gonna maintain it, and it goes away. So if you can address their concerns, whether they're really rational or not, you know, then they're happy to buy into it, one of the ones I did years ago in Darien. It was right when Hurricane Irene came, when it dropped, like four, four inches of rain in Darien, and this thing filled up, and the next day it was dry, and the owner called the builder and said. Jim, I had a lake in my yard yesterday, but now I don't have a lake, where'd the water go? And he said it went into the ground, and this homeowner was like, oh my God, this is awesome, you know, I saw this lake, and now I have no lake. So again, you know, when the homeowner is happy, everything works. So, you know, how does it work? It's really simple, water comes into it, it slows down, you know, any sediment settles out onto the soil surface. It filters through the soil media, which is mostly a sand mix, some compost and loam. Nutrients are taken up by the vegetation that you plant in there, and you can have lawn, you can literally have a fire retention system that's sodden. The grass will take up nutrients as well as any other plants, the key is that these are upland plants, these are not wetland plants. These are upland plants because fire retention systems are dry ninety-nine percent of the time. So, you know, the nutrients get taken up from the plants, and as the plants grow, especially on the root systems, you get biological communities being established, where now you get biological and chemical reactions. Some research from North Carolina State found that on some plants, the root nodules, the bacteria that were taking hydrocarbons. Breaking the hydrocarbons down and taking carbon for growth. You know, so you, you create what Mother Nature has naturally, that's the whole idea with these systems. Metals generally are trapped with the fine sediments, they have a high affinity chemically to fine sediment particles. Hydrocarbons also do that, so if you trap the sediments, metals and hydrocarbons get trapped, and you know, you're not talking about a lot of metals and hydrocarbons, you know, you may have. In your driveway, you know, a drop of oil the size of your thumbnail, you know, if it washes off, you know, the four hundred square foot area, it's pretty dilute, but. It stays in solution, but it will go into the fire retention system and then get trapped, and doesn't, you know, go anywhere else. And again, these bacteria over time, you know, have done wonders with breaking other compounds down. So citing them on the landscape, there's, you know, really four major things, the soil class and infiltration capacity. Depth to groundwater, the slope of the land, and, you know, general hydrologic conditions. So there are infiltration practices, but you have to have soils that will infiltrate, this is like rule number one. And if you don't have an adequate separation to groundwater, it's not gonna function, just like a septic system, we design. Septic systems with an eighteen inch separation between the bottom of the system and groundwater, so the F one can go into the ground. Fire retention, you need a similar separation, the manual that the state has, which they revised, which I haven't gone through yet, had a three foot separation because it was. Written in two thousand to two thousand two, the concern back then was nobody knew the fate of these blutes in the stormwater. The last thing they wanted to do was take surface water and now fill your shallow groundwater, so they said a three foot separation. Now we know that pretty much in the upper six inches of fire retention media, all this stuff is being attenuated, so. If you have a twelve inch separation from the bottom of a soil media or gravel there to groundwater, it works. You know, and that's all you need. You know, you don't need the three foot as far as that goes, I don't, like I said, I'm not sure what's in the new manual, it's a five hundred and fifty page manual, I have not. Taken the opportunities, I haven't been that bored, let me put it that way, to sit down and read it yet. So silting clay soils have slower infiltration rates, there's less void space because the soil particles are smaller, but also groundwater is held in silting clays. By cohesive forces, whereas in sand and gravel, water is freely able to move. So silting and clay soils, you can infiltrate, you can design systems for that, but you have to change how you design them versus something in sand and gravel. So basically, you know, sand and gravel, the top is, you know, big pieces of, you know, particles with a lot of void space. Silt in the middle, you know, a lot smaller particles, and then clay at the bottom is almost a little platy structure with, you know, very few white spots in it. But the New Hampshire Stormwater Center is actually where Tim and I both went to college, although the, I don't know, the research center was built after you left too, yeah. It was built way after I left, and, but they're on marine clays, and Robert, Robert Rosin, the former director there, said, you know, you can infiltrate into marine clay, you just have to design it with enough. Storage time to account for an infiltration rate that is like point one inches per hour, so clays will infiltrate, but you have to design it differently. So soils is the key to fire retention, if you not understand your soils, you, the best engineer in the world, you will fail, it's that simple. I can't tell you how many reviews I have done where we don't have soil testing by the fire retention systems, and the applicant, I've seen some up in Northwest Connecticut. Oh, we're providing the water quality volume as a storage volume, therefore it's gonna work. It's more complicated than that, the soils drive everything with infiltration practices, what tests do you need? You need a deep test hole, and you need an infiltration test. So an infiltr, a deep test hole, engineers do these all the time for septic, you know, we dig it seventy-eight foot down, you're looking for modeling, you're looking for. Groundwater depth roots, depth of bedrock. As I have a degree in forestry, you know, roots in a test pit will tell you that the groundwater is slightly below that, because the roots want to be in an aerobic zone close to groundwater. So in the absence of modeling. In a test pit, but if you've got a layer of roots, your groundwater is right below that, so it's a good indication. So, you know, here's a test pit, do you need fourteen people to log a test pit? No, and actually, in the years I've used this, I've only had one person say, that's an OSHA violation because there's no trench blocking. Only one person, and this includes engineers, so I kind of chuckle at that, but. You don't want to look at the dirt that's been dug out of the hole, you want to get in the hole with either a trowel or, you know, a little. Three prong rake, and you want to scratch the soil surface of the hole itself, because that's where you're gonna see the soil in its natural condition, what's in piled up next to it is all fluffy. But it's not in the test pit. If you're not an engineer and you don't, haven't had soils classes. Years ago, the state health department came up with this idea for septic fill of a, they called the mason jar test, take a mason jar full of water, take a handful of soil of the layer you want, put it in there. Shake it up, put it on the hood of your car for two minutes. Your gravel, your sand, and your silt will settle out like a Jell-O parfait, if the water is clear, you pretty much have no clay, if the water is cloudy. It may take a week for that water to become clear, but then you'll see this very fine layer of clay there, so it's a very quick and dirty way to see a composition of soils. Those of us who do test pits, I mean, I can stand atop the holes a guy's digging, and I know what the soils are, but I've lived in thousands of test pits. So, you know, sample description, and these are not a soil scientist, soil scientists will take me to task, I'm not using one cell color charts, is what they use. We want a common sense description, we want topsoil, which is the upper layer, you have a loam layer, a fine sandy loam, it could be a silt loam. You might have a second layer of the fine sand going to silt, and then you get your mineral soils, you get your hardpan, your glacial till. You know, you look for the depth of ledge, modeling, you know, groundwater, where are the roots? This is a soil description that tells engineers and landscape architects and commissioners, you know, this is a simple description, it's not complicated, and anybody can understand this. So four main classes of soils, you know, A through D, A are, are sand and gravel soils. B are sandy loams, C are, are silt loams, and D are poorly drained, think of wetland soils. So what do they look like? You know, A soils, the left is sand, the right is gravel, very coarse, you know, bright colors, most gravels are really a. Light brown color. When you get to a B soil on the left, you know, it's a, you know, that's a sandy loam soil, you can see the brown topsoil on top. And the C soil on the right, you know, you can get, you know, more silty layers, it looks a little smeary, you know, because the soil particles are finer. And, you know, there are more distinctive layers in a, in a C soil generally. And then D soils, you know, this is a wetland soil, I mean, it's clay, there is no void space in it, I mean, if you look at the left where they, you know, took a shovel down it, I mean, it, it looks like a piece of concrete. And it doesn't infiltrate, I mean, and with these soils, if there are openings, it's, there's a little hole here, and it has to go laterally, there might be a little hole here, and then it goes back and forth. So in sand and gravel, water can drain pretty much vertically down, but in C and D soils, it takes a convoluted path to get from the top to the bottom. So you also have to know what the infiltration capacity of the soil is, and, you know, on many of the applications you've probably seen. The engineers are probably doing percolation tests, well, percolation tests are not appropriate because they're measuring both the vertical and the horizontal movement of water, so it's overestimating. The vertical permeability rate, which is what we use to design these systems. Also, perk tests are done at the ground surface, if I have a fire retention system. It is, you know, the top of the media is a couple of feet below grade, and another foot down for the media, I'm three foot below grade, the infiltration test needs to be three foot or four foot. Below the ground surface because that's the layer of soil the water is gonna go into, and that's what you need to test, not the ground surface, perk test on. It's the top eighteen inches, and I'm four feet below grade, is useless, it has no bearing on the infiltration capacity, but it's commonly used on many applications. State manual is a minimum half an inch per hour, which is one foot per day, so the idea is, you have a foot of ponded water in twenty-four hours, it's gonna drain down. In theory, you can have a slower one, but then you need to account for changes in the design for that. It's not appropriate on the ground surface, perk tests again are not appropriate because it measures vertical and horizontal movement of water. This is a soil scientist percolate, infiltration test, they're basically concentric rings, and you fill both of them up. And then you keep the outer one filled up, and then you measure the inner one, and what you basically do is you have a, a donut of water in the ground. And then you're measuring the center of that donut moving down, so the water can only move vertically, it can't go laterally because there's basically a barrier for that movement. But the key in both in this picture is how deep they are, they're three foot below grade, that's the bottom of the practice. You know, again, here's another one with that, there's a simpler thing to use, actually, what's called a turf tech infiltrometer. The rings are, I think they're six inch and four inch, it actually comes with a handle, has a little center float with a little scale on it, and the timer. And it's, that's what we can use as engineers for this, we don't need this setup, this is like a two thousand dollar setup here, the turf tech infiltrometer is about four hundred dollars, and it's portable. So, but the same idea applies, they're just on a small. So, um, but the same idea applies, they're just on a smaller scale for that. But this is what happens with infiltration tests. The outer ring is saturated, so that inner ring, when you put water in it, can only go vertically down. That's what we're measuring now. In bioretention, there is movement laterally, but it's very difficult to account for that. I know U and H at one of their retrofits, um, Tim probably knows A Lot very well, which is up by the fieldhouse, they put in a infiltration trench based on Maryland design. And they actually were getting more lateral infiltration than vertical infiltration. It was a complete surprise to them, but modeling that has been very elusive to the scientists. So it's based on vertical, horizontal gives you a factor of safety. It occurs, but it's very difficult to quantify it going forward. So land slope, you know, picture on the left, you know, mild slope, it's easy to do with bioretention here. One of the beauties of bioretention is there's no set size, there's no set shape, whatever fits the landscape. Now, the steep slope on the right, the terraces, what they actually found in, in Manchu Picchu in the terraces, uh, down there is they had soil, they had grab, uh, big boulders underneath it, like rocks like this. They literally, that's where they farmed. The terraces trap the water in the stone and then the soil is what they grew the crops in. So on steep slopes, the bioretention doesn't have to be big and round, it can be long and narrow. And that's the key aspect of, you know, LISD is, there's not a, it's a performance based approach. There's not a cookbook for this. It's what fits the landscape. So we designed these to care, hold the water quality volume as a surface ponding depth. So on the left, that's easy, maybe it's a circle twenty foot in diameter, you know, something easy. The picture on the right, maybe it's a hundred foot long and two foot wide, but as long as you hold the water quality volume, that's what matters. So again, it's performance based, and this is one of the most difficult things I find with designers is they think it has to fit a certain shape or size, instead of working with what mother nature gives you. So ideally, two to ten percent makes life very easy for bioretention. But on steep slopes, as long as you hold that water quality volume, you make it long and narrow. The water doesn't care, but it works very well. You know, any size or shape, you know, originally, a lot of the early rain guards that came out in the Midwest were kidney shaped, I guess, you know, and they planted them and they were attractive. But you can make any shape you want. You know, there, you know, I did one in Darien, uh, where they had zero increase requirements and because the architect took up most of the lot for the house and they didn't want to lose the backyard, we actually made a bioretention system that was probably from here to the wall roughly squared off. We made it six inches deep and we made six to one side slopes into it. So it looked like a depression in the yard and it was all sodded, but the gutter pipes came in at the corners and the pipes were cut. So during, you know, non rainy days, it was a playful backyard for the kids. When it rained, it was a bioretention system, but you would never know it. So again, you can fit these in anywhere. It's one of, that's one of the things I love about it is it's a very creative approach. You know, because it's not like detention ponds, there's a general shape for detention ponds or cul-de-sacs or whatever. You know, LISD, you work with the land. And that's the key aspect of this. So a typical bioretention, this is from the Rhode Island manual coming off a parking lot, is, you know, having a lip at the edge of the pavement, um, in the bottom cross sectional view. You don't necessarily need that little stone trench they show there, but the key is, here's the pavement. If my topsoil is up here, that water's not going to fall off, it's going to build up along the edge. So you pick your topsoil two inches down, so the water falls off the edge. This has a little filter strip, just a grass filter strip, and then the bioretention system. This one has an underdrain and you can see the underdrains at the bottom, but the whole gravel bottom pitches to the center. So if you do a level bottom of your gravel and an underdrain in the center, the water on the left side or the right side is never going to get to the center. You just depress the center a couple of inches, now the water all goes to the underdrain pipe. The original details used to have the fabric go across the bottom and up the sides. Rhode Island only puts a piece of fabrics right over the underdrain pipe if you have one. The other thing that, uh, U and H came up with, and I think this might be appropriate detail is, you know, because it says media is very sandy and then the gravel underneath is inch and a quarter stone, so it's pretty coarse. So how do you keep the two apart? U and H found a three inch layer of pea gravel, three eighths pea gravel, keeps the sand above and keeps the other stuff clean. It's kind of counterintuitive to me as an engineer, but it works very well in practice. So again, designs of these systems have gotten better over time because people play with them. If they breaks, then, you know, they figure out why.
I'm sorry, so with, with the underdrain, is there any maintenance that needs to happen then?
No, so fabric protects the underdrain from sediment getting there. And basically, as long as the system is infiltrating, it's functioning. You don't have to dig it up. The problem with, with the older ones, when they had the whole thing lined, is it, the lines trapped on the fabric, it clogged the fabric and you had to dig the whole thing up.
Under what circumstances would you need an underdrain?
If you had a condition, um, say you did have a hardpan site, you know, hardpan at twenty four inches. So maybe, you know, you know, want to clean the water, but you're not really concerned about losing volume, you know, because, you know, you got poor soils there. Then you put the underdrain in.
I see.
You get water quality benefit, but not necessarily volume reduction. You can also put the underdrain elevated above the bottom to drive infiltration, but have an overflow pipe for larger storm events. So there's different ways to skin the proverbial cat. So there's also what's called a P index. Phosphorus in the typical soil, uh, you know, you get about thirty percent removal. If you put, uh, either, um, iron oxide, which they use in Minnesota, um, or, uh, the alum, which they use for water treatment plants to floculate sediment out. Uh, UNH will use the aluminum. You can increase the phosphorus removal by doubling it up to about sixty percent in a bioretention system. The problem with the alum is it, when they take it from a wastewater treatment plant, it's kind of like a nickel sodium slime. It's really gooey stuff and UNH has been trying different ways to effectively dry it out to mix it in, but they mix it in about five percent by volume. But you can now greatly increase the phosphorus removal in a bioretention system. You know, phosphorus is a concern in freshwater systems, nitrogen is a concern in, uh, soft water systems. Um, internal water surge, this is, uh, this was developed by Bill Hunt, North Carolina State. Bill is, one of these professors, he, I don't think his brain ever turns off. He is always thinking and he's extremely creative. You know, because nitrogen, you can only really, uh, it comes out in an anaerobic environment, but a bioretention is a dry environment. It's only anaerobic for a short period of time. So, uh, the typical bioretention is this is one of the details I use. It, you know, you've got the surface storage for the water quality volume, you've got the media and the whole no gravel, it's a fully infiltrating system. This is the simplest way to do it. The next one is, you know, the media, the pea gravel layer and elevated underdrain, you can see it right below the middle layer of gravel. And then it's infiltrating, but now has an overflow provision for larger storm events. So what Bill Hunt came up with was, uh, the same concept, but with the underdrain com- coming out, it, the pipe goes out horizontally. It goes up ninety and out ninety. And what happens, water seeks its own level. So what we're doing now is saturating the bottom six inches of the media. We're creating an anaerobic environment. Now we enhance the nitrogen removal. Phosphorus is coming out in the upper six inches and now I got a system that removes more nitrogen. So, you know, very simple, no moving parts or anything, but very effective, um, as far as that goes. This detail, uh, which is from the UNH Stormwater Center, they are creating the same concept that Bill, a little bit fancier. What they basically have is the media, but then they have a layer of, uh, I think it's a forty mil liner that pitches from one end to the other. But right at the low end, there's like a gap like this. So water, no matter what infiltrates, hits the liner, runs down the liner and then drops into the gravel there underneath. And they have an elevated underdrain, so it creates the same environment. It creates this anaerobic environment for removal of nitrogen, but yet you get the phosphorus removal up in the medium. This is a little more complicated, I think. You know, I much prefer the Bill Hunt, you know, way, but this is what the researchers are doing. They figure out, you know, they look at different ways. And, you know, they prove that it works or it doesn't work, and then it's available for designers like myself to use, you know, in certain situations. Uh, this is again, you know, just other details from them. So sizing of these systems, you know, there's a couple of different ways to do it. What I do is take the water quality volume, which is the one inch of rain, um, over the contributing area. And I, that volume is my fixed storage volume on top of the soil media to a one foot ponding depth. I don't include, um, storage within the soil media, within the gravel layer if I have it, or the infiltration rate, and those are factors of safety. And the reason we do this also is that then I have a system that can handle more water than one inch of rain. If I have an infiltration rate at three inches an hour and it rains, you know, I get, you know, five inches of rain. I've got infiltration rate, we model it at fifty percent, but if we don't screw up the construction side of it, you know, that water is infiltrating three inches per hour. So if it rains five inches per hour, it's still, it's going to pond, but it's also going to infiltrate. So it provides a factor of safety where we can now use bioretention for peak rate attenuation without compromising the system by ponding three or four feet of water over it. So it's very simple, the water quality volume divided by the allowable ponding depth, get to the surface area. And this is the soil media surface, then you have your slopes up generally two to one, three to one to the top of, uh, your system. So, you know, very simple, four hundred and fifty cubic feet, um, in a D, uh, B soil, which is a nine inch ponding depth, is a six hundred square foot area. How you make that six hundred square feet, it's up to you. Twenty by thirty, you know, get creative, let your artistic side come out. Now, I don't have any artistic talent, I admit that. My wife's a graphic designer, she has more in her pinky than I have in my whole body. But, you know, the key here is just, it's, it's, you know, you fit it to the landscape, you know, and you make it attractive. So years ago, I was coming up with, uh, you know, this concern of, you know, the soils get poor with hardpan soils, you know. If you do a foot of media and foot of ponding depth, but you got eighteen inches of hardpan, it doesn't work unless you raise it up above the ground. So in doing a literature review, I found that, uh, North Carolina was one state where they, is the soils got poorer, the ponding depth got less, the surface area got bigger. And basically that comes up here. So with an A soil, it's a twelve to eighteen ponding depth, a B is six to twelve inches, a C is three to six, but the surface area is correspondingly getting, uh, larger. The media, what we typically use, we know this works, is eighty five percent sharp sand. It's a washed concrete sand, uh, thirteen percent wood chip compost or leaf compost, it's really well decomposed. Just about two percent sandy loam, but the clay content's got to be less than two percent. You'll see, and I'm sure you've seen it on other plans where the soil media, they may be calling out twenty percent topsoil. That's going to fail. There's too much clay content in twenty percent topsoil. And these are volume based, this works really well. What they're doing actually in China is using koi, which is coconut husk that's decomposed and chopped up very finely instead of compost. Compost is not a problem if there's no underdrain. If it's an underdrain system, you will likely leach nutrients for the first couple of years because of the compost, but then it stabilizes. But if it's a fully infiltrating practice, the leaf, the leaf or wood chip compost is fine because it can't go anywhere, um, as far as that goes. UNH developed a soil media specification based on particle size distribution. And I've had discussions with Jamie up there, you know, Jamie, we have landscape contractors or excavating contractors that have to provide this media. They don't understand what a particle size distribution is. So you got to keep it simple for people. I think Greenwich has one that they use, it's a, I think it's a golf course, you know, green mix, which again is very sandy. I'm not sure it's great for bioretention, but there are people that actually have that mix available. But, uh, for this mix, you know, you just get the various components, mix it up like a cake batter on a piece of pavement and put it in the system. It's not complicated. So there's also talk about.
Steve, can, can you, um, can you get into, uh, the pervious pavement and how this design can maybe pair with that design and, and how?
Yeah, we'll go through bioretention pictures, then I'm going to get an impervious pavement. You know, a, a lot of time, this is a general, I guess, guide. You're better off paving the driveways and other things with standard asphalt and doing bioretention systems.
That's what I wanted to get into.
That's really, that's really. The end use of the homeowner is not going to do the maintenance of a permeable pavement driveway. So it's rather better to have a standard asphalt driveway, pitch it to let it go to a bioretention system. It's A, less expensive and B, it's more effective. The other problem with permeable asphalt, or horse concrete for that matter, is you need to be over half an acre of area to make it cost effective. If you're doing a residential driveway that's, you know, five thousand square feet, it's going to cost an arm and a leg to do it because the plants like OMG or Tilcon, when they make horse asphalt, they don't make regular asphalt that day. They shut the plant down to make the mix because it's specialized. So you, it's, if you only want a little, it gets very expensive. If you want a lot, then it's fine. I think that's probably the case when they did the Blackrock Church. I know a lot of that lot is, uh, horse asphalt. But for residential, you're much better off keeping the driveway as impervious. You got your roof doing bioretention systems for the runoff. It's a much more cost effective and environmentally friendly option, um, as far as that goes.
Yeah, that's, that's why.
Because I know you had that one application.
Yeah.
Before High Street, you know, I think with Huntington Company, you know, about that. So it, that's the other thing is there's a lot of regulators, oh, can you give me lid? And the engineers, of course, want their projects approved, so they give you lid. Is it appropriate or not is the question. And in many cases, it's not. And when it fails, it's problem, like, you know, homeowners, I had one homeowner, um, I didn't do the design, but they had a horse asphalt driveway. They had a pretty long driveway, but then the guy, five years later, went and sealed it with asphalt seal. Just, you know, you know, he wanted a nice looking driveway. I don't blame the guy, but he didn't understand what he had. So now it was an impervious surface, he just coated it with a sealed oil. So you're really better off having them impervious and then, you know, grading them in such a way to direct it to a vegetated system. Ideally, if you have a driveway where you've got a big lawn area off of it, laying the water sheet across the vegetation within fifty, seventy five feet, it'll infiltrate. So you don't even need a structure. So that's even a more effective way, you know, to handle the runoff.
I'm sorry, laying a sheet, what do you mean?
Sheet flow, just, uh, if, say you're, you're building a driveway, say the, you know, grade is a table. I raised my driveway up a couple of feet above this and I, I pitch it either with a crown or I, you know, pitch it one side to the other. But then I have a big lawn area, I have like fifty, seventy five feet of lawn raining that way. The water simply sheets off the pavement, falls onto the grass, runs across the grass and infiltrates as it runs. So you don't need any stormwater management system. But a lot of the smaller lots that we see, you know, in Fairfield and other towns that are mostly developed, you don't have those large vegetated areas, you know, they're very tight. So, but you could, you know, uh, pitch it from one side to the other. We do this commonly, put a low curve on it and then at one, at a low point on the driveway, maybe at the end by the house, you have a notch in the curb where it goes into a bioretention system.
But up in Greensville Hill, we got a lot of flag lots.
Rear lots.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, in those cases, you know, you might need to, you know, again, put a low curve, a cape cod curve, which is only three inch along one side of the driveways and pitch the pavement surface so it goes against the curb, let it run down the curb and then pick it up at intervals where you can treat it in a bioretention system.
Even on a flag lot, would it be better just to have like a small pitch going onto the grass?
You know, you can do a, you could do a grass swale too. That's another option. I mean, you know, you could do a swale along the edge of the driveway that's all grassed. The shallower and wider the ditch, the better it is. You know, a lot of engineers will design swales that are one foot wide, one foot deep with three to one side slopes. That's a hole in the ground. But if you made it, you know, three foot wide, six inches deep with three to one side slopes, very, you know, a very flat swale, that's really effective because as the grass grows up, if you can keep the flow depth in a swale in the bottom two or three inches, where all the root structure of the, or I should say the bottom of the grass is, the flow velocities are like nil and none, that water will simply infiltrate. So there's a lot of different ways to, I guess, skin the proverbial, you know, stormwater, uh, here. So, uh, this is just the soil media, you know, from UNH. So, you know, appropriate plants, they're upland. Whatever you want as an upland plant, one of the systems I have at my house, I have those big turf grasses that get big fluffy things. The other one in, uh, by the road, I planted ferns in it. I mean, those ferns will grow up this tall and they propagate on their own. So as long as they're upland species, because these are dry systems, um, as far as that goes. If, you know, it's ponding, you know, a lot more than twenty four hours, all you generally take is a three prong garden hoe, rake the ground surface around the plants that just break up that surface and it'll infiltrate again. You know, the C soils, you know, again, you know, you might have to do it more, it depends on how much sediment load, uh, you know, you get into it. So this is, uh, one at my house, the upper left is the one that's got my turf grasses in it. When I put this in, I actually had to water it for the first month because it didn't rain at all and the plants would have died. The other one is in, uh, Milford, Connecticut, at a garden homes project. We had very sandy gravel, their roof was eight thousand square feet, so there were two of these, one in the front, one in the back. And they're fully infiltrated, they just work exceedingly well. This is the one at the end of my driveway, taking. Uh, this is the one at the end of my driveway, taken a number of years ago. I had different plants in it. Now I put ferns in it because they're less, uh, to maintain. But I cut a notch in my driveway so the water as it runs down the gutter line goes in there. When it fills up ten inches, then the bypass automatically curves down to the catch basin. But both of these are not underdrained. They fully infiltrate everything that goes into them. And it's in a class B soil, so it's just a sandy loam soil. So, uh, these are some we did in East Hampton, uh, around Lake Pocatog. Uh, this was at Sears Park, um, which is, you know, their recreational area. Again, we had sandy soils here, but all the water came to the corner of the guardrail. So we had a ripper, I saw, you know, came down to, uh, the system. Uh, this was another one at the same place, but up by tennis courts and basketball court, where we again directed the water into them. Uh, this was one off a roadway where again, we had a short swale that came in from the upper right of the picture. Um, the catch basins here, we wanted to catch more water, but there, the pipes were like seven feet below grade and we couldn't figure out a way to get water from the bottom up. Um, but, you know, these were, they're trying to address some nutrient loads going into Lake Pocatog, you know. Um, we've just done a, actually a second round of designs, uh, they're out to bid right now. So how to install them? This is what you need to have on the plans. The engineers have gotta provide a sequence of construction. It's practical. You can't assume an excavating contractor knows how to build them. They like to dig holes, foundations or driveways or septics. They don't know how to do this. The key with this is the equipment stays out of the center, out of the hole. Everything is done from the outside. And basically, once you dug the hole down, you then scarify the bottom with the excavator. You use a metal garden rake on the side walls, remove the smeared soil and then throw it out. And then you build your layer cake. In this case, this was with crushed stone, the pea gravel, the soil media and the plants. But you've gotta have a sequence of construction on the plants along with maintenance requirements. This is what you need on all the plans, whether it's a residential site or a commercial site. Uh, going back to my house, this is the one, my driveway, you know, so I painted out the shape of it and I started digging by hand. Um, I have always enjoyed doing yard work like this, although some days I wonder why I do it. Um, but, you know, I dug the hole down and I had fill material, but then I had the sandy loam soil. And then this is the turf tech infiltrometer. So I'm down, you know, a foot below the topsoil layer. So that's where I did my infiltration test, um, and, you know, with this little system. But then you can, you know, you can kind of see that the soil is a little smeared in the left there from walking over it. So then I take my garden rake and I scarify the bottom of it. So I loosen up that smeared surface. Then that's what the sand looks like. That's what the leaf compost looks like. Um, I did not mix this on my driveway before I threw it in here. I put the sand in, then I put the compost in, and then I basically just turned it over like you're tilling a garden, um, as far as that goes. Uh, planted it and like I said, it gets, um, about half of my roof, so it's about two hundred square feet of my garage roof, but it gets three thousand square feet of my driveway. My driveway pitched right to this corner. And for the first month, I had to water, otherwise those plants would have died because it just didn't rain, uh, as far as that goes. Uh, this was one up in Harlem, we did a number of years ago, um, a much larger one for a commercial application. And again, you know, the hole is scarified, the gravel's stumped from the outside, the guy spreads it, um, you know, and put stakes in so he could have grade stakes. Uh, this was with the pea gravel and then I happened to go away to a conference, so I never saw the soil media come in. But I was there about a year ago and while they haven't maintained the vegetation, it's still infiltrating. Water has never gone into those overflow pipes. So the system is fully infiltrating and it's been in place probably eleven, twelve years at this point. So even without maintenance, they actually do pretty well. Um, so this is, um, one of the things of traveling to South Korea. Landon Housing Institute is a government corporation and one of the researchers there uh, came up with these videos. And this is a rain garden. Now it does have sound, which we're somehow not missing, but you've got rain coming off the impervious surface going into the rain garden and then it's gonna flip to a cross sectional view and you see how it functions. You see the water going into the soil with the high level overflow system. These are all like twenty-second long, uh, videos. Um, and I can share these, you know, with Tim. They're really great little videos that, uh, they put together. I think they're also on, um, YouTube also. Um, an infiltration ditch is kind of like a swale, um, off a parking lot. You know, it's a vegetated swale with gravel in the center, a sand layer. But again, it's a fully infiltrating practice. But the beauty of this is a lot of people look at lid, it's like, how do these work? Will these show you how it works? You know, and when homeowners see this, like, oh, that's how it works. It's a great, it's a great tool. I mean, when he shared these with me, I was like, oh my God, these are like perfect things to use. So another one, oops. So they have another one here of a vegetated swale. This one's more vegetate. This has an underdrain, but it's a little elevated above the bottom, you know. And the key here is it shows the wetting front moving down and then, you know, a little bit of water coming out, but most of it infiltrates. And that's the beauty of these systems, you know, of showing people how these systems work because that's, you know, you know, that's really, you know, the major issue. So why do some systems have problems? Well, it's not a real, only realtor, it's from location matters tremendously with these. Um, where they are in the landscape, the soils, the groundwater design, specification issues. So this is one in Southbury, um, sand and gravel soils. Uh, bio retention cell on the right is right next to a wetland. Wetlands don't infiltrate water. The other problem is the bottom of the soil media was two foot below the elevation of the wetlands. So did it infiltrate? No, it became a mini wetland cell. The one in the center, uh, the bottom of it was only six inches above the seasonal groundwater based on test pits. This has also become a wetland cell. That's what they should have been designed as. So, um, this is another one in Southbury. Again, we have great sand and gravel soils. We also have a lot of bad lid. So this was a, a building for, um, The Voice is our local newspaper. This was put in at the end of the construction. That's the problem. Bio retention needs to be put in early in the construction process and then protected so that they are vegetated when you turn the stormwater on. In this case, it wasn't stabilized around it. That fine layer of sediment got in there and clogged it. When this picture was taken, it had potted already a few days. It stayed potted for ninety days. Ninety days, three months worth. So the reason it did is the engineer pulled this detail off the internet, which is the old Prince George's County with the high percent topsoil, but a layer of filter fabric. The media clogged. And that's why going online to pull stuff off is the worst thing you can do. You, because everything on the internet, this detail will still show up today. And, you know, and people use it and they don't realize that it doesn't work. So this is the system, uh, only a couple of years ago. The far, the right-hand picture, the far end is actually has faculative wetland plants in it. So this is underlying by sand and gravel and yet we're developing a wetland system here because it's clogged and it doesn't, it doesn't drain. So, uh, another one up in, uh, Warren, Connecticut. Again, the red line is a wetland boundary. The engineer put three of these right next to the wetlands. This soil was so sandy, when you walked in the upland area, you squished. And he said, well, I provide the water quality volume. That's all he did. These things never had a chance at all. Um, another one is putting them at the end of the pipe. We see this, I actually saw this last night at another meeting. If you're gonna put bio retention at the end of the pipe, you have to have a forbate to trap sediment at the end of the pipe before the system. Because that water coming out there is gonna stir everything up and it's just gonna seal up and you're gonna be done. It's a real problem. Uh, this was one, this is kind of unique. This is in Seaside Village down in Bridgeport. This was back about two thousand nine or ten, uh, through a chance meeting, actually, it's, uh, saved the sound. Uh, Seaside Village is a collection of houses were built, uh, mainly for professors at UB when it first opened. Beautiful, you know, brick houses, slate roofs, you know, narrow, really narrow roads, big oak trees around, but it's all filled wetlands. Um, so they wanted to address it. So they were looking, they got together with the Yale School of Design and to work on the houses. And then they were talking about stormwater and basically, uh, Yale said, well, we got this landscape architect that can help you with stormwater. So he had the idea of these bio, you know, he called them bio swales and it's a demonstration project and, uh, because I was at this meeting, my uncle had taught at Yale, so I used that as my introduction. And I got retained by the homeowners to do a topographic survey of the parking lot, but also we did test pits. And what we found is we had about three feet of fill material on top of marine clay, I mean gray modeling clay. Then we had sand and gravel. The sand and gravel was unsaturated. So because everything stayed above the clay layer. So I said, you know, look, do, you don't have a big enough drainage area, do one of these cells or two cells in the grass area. He wanted to do it in the gravel parking lot. And basically this became an example of what not to do. I actually did a whole presentation on it. But they dug these down where the bottom of the media was, uh, top of the media was actually below the fill clay interface. So all that water came in here. These things filled up with water from day one and they've stayed filled for years this way. This is again, an example of what not to do. Um, and, you know, it showed me, no matter how many times I raised the issue with the landscape architect, you know, oh, you don't know what you're talking about. Well, I did, but I got ignored. So this is what happened. Um, so up in Torrington, um, bio retention is stop and shop parking lot. The key word with bio retention is bio. There's no bio here. It's stones. And also when the catch basin grade is set flush to the bottom, there's no storage either. Water goes in, goes right out. Um, this is in Oxford, uh, the shopping center, which was a quarry. Underlaying this entire site is basically bedrock. And same thing, there is some plants here anyway, but, um, you know, not much, but the water can't go anywhere. It goes right into the drains. Uh, we can go all the way down to Florida. I, I had an aunt that lived on Siesta Key and one time my wife and I were down there and she gets annoyed with me because when I'm driving around, always looking. So luckily I don't get an accident. Right at Siesta Key, new parking lot, bio retention. I was like, oh, this is cool. I get out, there's a catch basin grade set flush to the bottom. I like laugh. I'm like, you know, all you got to do is raise it this much and it works, guys. You're insane. Nice plant though, I'll give them that. But, you know, this is what kind of drives me nuts. It's so simple, but yet we mess it up so easily.
I was just gonna, I, one of the questions I was gonna ask is how much does it, obviously depends on what kind of like soil matter you're dealing with. In the state of Connecticut, what is the range? Is there a wide range like down by the beach? Is it more sandy and?
Oh, and generally, yeah, your, your coastal areas are more sandy. Your river valleys are like Southbury because the amperog is. But then if you go to the western side of Southbury, up on the ridge, it's a geological prumlin of hardpan at eighteen inches. So, you know, but your river valleys and your coastal areas tend to have the best soils for it. But I've done bio, I did bio retention at Jerian, um, in hardpan soils. You know, again, we made it big, shallow, and it works.
So in, in places like Greensville Hill?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be.
You can do them.
You can do them.
Why do most builders just do down, you know, do liters right into your yard and don't build anything around?
No, part of the problem is we have to change the paradigm. You know, rainfall is something to be gotten rid of. Rainfall is a resource, you know, reuse, recycle it.
And it's a huge issue now, but, you know, managing water effectively is, is important.
And so it's changing that paradigm, you know. It, you know, it's, it's not something to be gotten rid of. It's something to be reused and recycled. Now, you know, you know, without clean water, no matter what else goes on in the world, we'll pass away. If you don't have clean water, you're dead. Um, so, you know, we need to clean it and we need to put it back into the ground where it's available again. And, you know, it's just that way. Now, for residential, you could put, if you've got a lot of landscaping, put rain barrels in for your gutters with an overflow to a bio retention system. Why pay for potable water to water your plants? You know, you got four thousand square feet of roof on your house, you know, an inch of rain is a lot of water. So again, it's ju, it's changing the mindset, what it comes down to. So, so Hartford, uh, DEP did retrofits at the Capitol a number of years ago. And again, you know, here's a catch basin flush at the bottom. There's no storage volume in it.
They're not even watering the plants that are there.
Well, probably not, yeah. It's, you know, you know, I, disconnect, um, we have a DEP on environmental side, be a whole other thing. It's frustrating. So a year ago, I was driving down Nashville and, uh, I eighty-one rest here, but beautiful sign, rain garden. Except look at the thing on the right. It's not lower, it's actually center, about that much higher and the edge is nice sign intense there. It's just, there's no storage volume. I like laughed when I see this. I'm like, oh my God, come on, guys. Oh, yes. You know, another picture of it. I mean, there's no storage, the center of it is higher than the edges. You know, um, so.
All landscapers like to do the volcano.
So, uh, this one again was on a filled site in the road, right on Route twenty-five when they redid the diner. No soil test pits, it potted up, killed the upland plants. Week later, we had more rain. Now we had a lake here. And what they wound up doing was actually, um, pumping it out and they put an underdrain in down the center of it to the little catch basin you can see on the right-hand side. So now the plants are really happy, but there's no ponding. The water comes into this, hits the underdrain, goes right out to the catch basin. So it's a problem. Uh, up in our, uh, LL Bean in South Windsor, uh, bio retention, there's one tree here. And again, you know, the gravel right to the catch basin. So, um, you know, uh, this is the Target Lowes in Southington. This is the ESPN exit, I think it's thirty. Um, again, these are, uh, done kind of as an afterthought. They cut notches in, the notch on the left, the pavement actually pitches away from it. So the water doesn't go in there. This one I love because the parking lot pitches towards the building, but then it's got a, a right-left cross slope. So this notch never gets any water, it's, it's going either side of it. Now, the media was okay here. The problem was no underdrain and it was on top of fifteen feet of structural fill. So even if the water could pond here, it couldn't go anywhere because there's no way to, you know, infiltrate.
Some of these projects that you're showing, Steve, is, is this, failures like this speak due to boards and town engineering that approve your stuff or?
Kind of, yeah. This was.
Or construction.
Actually, no, this was poor design. Actually, they had these islands in the gradient of the parking lot and, um, New England Environmental, um, which has since sold to SWCA or something like that, out of Ambers, was involved and they were asked to do bio retention in the islands. That's not their expertise. They designed these, you know, and it's a, it's a design failure. They were constructing exactly per the plan because I wanted to pull the plans.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, the town said, oh, can you do bio retention in the islands? Well, yeah, we can, but.
Yeah, that, that's kind of what, why this kind of started. Uh, we had a couple of applicants come up and, uh, some commissioners, myself included, were like, oh, can we do a permeable pavement in the driveway? Uh, where they had, their design was, uh, impervious pavement with a, you know, underneath the, uh.
Coltech.
The coltech or whatever, and then that would spread out. And you know, we're trying to, we're thinking of, is it better? Is it not better? Is it cost effective? Is it not cost effective? It, you know, and but I'm not sure if we're, if it's something we should, we could do or should do. Because I mean, at the outset, you said unless somebody's got, you know, an acre or two of it, it might not be worth it.
Yeah, it's not for a homeowner because you've got to, there's maintenance required for permeable pavements. And homeowners, it's above their head to do that, quite honestly. So.
That really answers, I think that answers a big question for, for us, yeah.
First question. So like if you had somebody and the applicant was gonna say, well, we're not, we're never gonna put salt down, we're never gonna put sand down or whatever, or whatever onto this thing. But if the cars are driving on the road and then they bring it on their tires, I mean, they're still gonna have to be a maintenance regimen, right? I mean, like it's, it, it's not gonna be salt.
If you don't put sand on your driveway, if it's permeable asphalt, it's gonna track in, you get slush on your car, you park your car outside, the slush falls off, there's plenty of sediment in it. So it's gotta be maintained and that's why it's generally not suitable. Number of years ago, I had engineers in Greenwich area, because there is stormwater manual, called me up and asked about doing permeable pavement on driveways. My first question is how big is it? And if it was less than half an acre, I was like, your client's gonna kill you when they get pricing on it.
And, and, and as, as a commission, like let's say that you're coming to us and they want this permeable pavement and they're saying that they're not gonna put salt, they're not gonna put. What, like there's, you know, this vacuuming of the pavement, like what is that cost? I mean, like.
Well, you know, for residential driveway, you can get one of these Billy Go push behind, you know, vacuums. It's like a leaf blower size. You know, you can do that and you should really do it, you know, like once a week. It will take you fifteen minutes to do it, but that way you prevent anything from building up on it. If it doesn't get maintained regularly, get built up now, to clean it out becomes much more problematic and expensive.
And that's very helpful because I think that's what my, my, my big hiccup was, like people are saying, oh, you know, like, so it's, it's extremely intensive.
It can be, you know, I mean, that's why, you know, again, for small areas, it's better to, you know, do standard asphalt in a fire retention cell.
Right. So that, that would be my next question is, okay, so if we're, if, if for us to try to be more than just impervial, impervious pavement. Say, okay, do that, but slope it to if we look at a plan and we see that there's an area nearby, can you do a fire retention system and pool it there? Is that something that we will be able to do?
Absolutely. That's easy to do. And these are for, you know, a driver that's five or six thousand square feet. And if you've got even a class B soil, you can do a fire retention for less than three thousand dollars. They're not expensive to do. So you know, it's really effective. There's less maintenance of them. And again, as the plants grow, they become a mini ecosystem. So that's really the way to go. You know, the fact sheets that I, I did for you guys were taken from the Morse Lizzy manual that I wrote a couple of years ago. And really, if you want really, you know, lid or Lizzy in Fairfield, a creation of a manual for the town with all of the specs in it for everything. And the whole approaches is the way to go because you give the engineers the cookbook, they follow the cookbook, you can look at it. If they have a fire retention cell that says has five acres range, but the manual may say no more than two, you're gonna say, wait a minute, you can't have more than two acres here. You gotta give me another one. You know, it makes it very easy. Put all the specifications laid out so that the engineers are not going online to pull stuff off the internet. And the whole process is laid out of how you can apply it in different situations. You know, that's really what has been effective. In oh seven, oh eight, when I got retained by Tolland, they became the first town to mandate lid. And it was, you know, you know, a little bit of pulling teeth, but you know, they adopted it. And one day it was conventional stormwater management, the next day was lid, you know, that's, and the engineers got on board with it. And the project that drove them up the wall was, which you go up to get off the Yukon exit there is, there's a big Y sitting up there. It's, it's a hundred and twenty feet of gravel. And they had underground galleries under the parking lot and they, the commission tried to get them to do fire retention in the islands and then go to the galleries. They weren't saying get rid of the galleries. And the engineers absolutely refused to and their chairman was an environmental engineer and. I think of her name now. But she basically was so mad at other professional engineers, it wasn't funny. And you know, through a chance meeting, I sponsored a workshop at U N H at that time and all these people from Tolland had signed up, you know? And that's how I, you know, met the planner and did the manual. But you know, that's what you need. If you want lid, you've got to have it that way. And then, you know, you'll get the right way. It'll work because it's proven, you know, technologies are proven, all the specs are proven, you know? And there's no question. It's all written in black and white. So, but that's where the fact sheet stuff came from. This one is no longer there in Branford. This was one of the first fire retention in Ireland, but notice it's all elevated around it. Where the notch is, there's a flat top catch basin right there. The water came in the notch, hit the catch basin, went right out to the title discharge. I took a professor, she was from University of Auckland at the time, whose parents still live in Westport. And she was on sabbatical, the EPA, I think in New Jersey. So she's like, oh, well, you know, I'm gonna come up, this is my parents, you know? How about, you know, do a lid tour in Connecticut? I got all these sites off the Connecticut D E P website. Liz and I got out of the car and this one, we both fell over laughing. And she goes, well, it's good retrofit site. Now what happened, all the plants are gone, it's all mulched and they put fabric over the catch basin top and mulched over it. I, you know, you can't make it up. This one's down at Yale, New Peabody Museum. I drove by her, my daughter was actually visiting a friend in the apartment building here and I was like, oh, this is cool. So I get out of the car, much to my son's embarrassment. And I'm looking around like, where's the pipe coming in? There's no pipe, but I see it at the building on the picture on the right. Yeah, that pipe goes right out the driveway, right to a catch basin. So the only water that falls into this, and these are nicely done, is what falls on it from Mother Nature. I was like, oh my God, just so close, yet so far away, you know? This is what we see. Going back to Southbury, this is a small retail and apartments upstairs. Fire retention at the end of the pipe, no foot pay. Look at the sediment accumulation. Look at all the dead plant. This happened in six months. And the underlying soil here is sand and gravel. Here's better views of other ones. These things failed miserably right off the bat. You've got, if you put it in the end of the pipe, you've got to slow the water down, but you also have to trap sediment before it gets out to the rest of the system. Timing of construction, you put them in early and then you protect them so that they're vegetated when you hit the storm. You know, you know, if you, a thin layer of silk, you know, an eighth inch or less can clog the soil median surface. So you gotta protect them. The plans have to have clear steps for the installation and maintenance of these systems. They've got to be right on the plans. And if they're not, you know, don't approve them because it's not gonna work. Again, general construction steps is, you know, delineating it, you know, marking out, digging it out, you know, it's all, it's not rocket science. It's really simple. Kind of like digging your garden up. You know, but you've got to have the maintenance on the plans and a lot of towns have, even for homeowners, it, written in the deed is a requirement to maintain. Fire retention cell or whatever you might use is right in the deed. So title searchers pick it up. So future homeowners, you know, see it. You know, again, water them to get them established as far as that goes. We can design these for larger storm events. You know, I'll give, I don't know, I didn't give you the presentation, did I, Tim? Yeah, I'll do a P, I'll give you a PDF of this, you know, but let me get into, this is one I didn't dare Ian. This was sized for a fifty-year storm. Ponding depth was nine inches, but the surface area is quite big. And the time that's been put in, it has never hit the overflow pipes. It fully infiltrates. Every rainfall that we've had for eight years at least is fully infiltrated in this system. So.
Good. You don't have any stones at the end of that pipe.
Well, not at this point. The contractor actually put two pieces of flagstone there. You can see the sediment kind of coming off it. So I said, no, you gotta give me, I said, you gotta give me field stone. And that's what he did. He did about a four foot diameter circle of field stone. Now it's fine. So, you know, it called out stone on the plan. He thought he could use flagstone, but he found out that all it did was just bounce the water, you know, down. So, but you know, he was willing to change it. That's the key. So this is one in Milford. This is affordable housing one. It was an upland knoll surrounded by wetlands. It was all sand and gravel. How the glacier left this year is beyond me, but it was phenomenal dirt. I dug handholds down fifty-four inches, the shovel and post all there. I don't think I could do that anywhere else in the state. So there were two of them. This was actually a zero discharge site up to the hundred-year storm event. We had two fire retention systems for the roof. It was split fifty-fifty. The parking lot was permeable asphalt. This was the first one I've done. And it works exceedingly well for the site, but again, it's on beautiful soils. So. And again, the fire retention was put in when the foundation was put in and protected. So that by the time the roof drains came in, it looked like that. It was fully vegetated. These are some that I just did in Stonington. They're trying to, you know, address their M S four. This is at the high school. We're actually taking. In the plan view, you have the fire retention cell, you have a pipe coming down and a pipe kind of going to the right. To that catch basin, that water actually, the water flows from the left to the right. So I'm actually building a weir in the catch basin and I'm gonna force the main parking lot water to go that way. And then go into the fire retention cell and then it goes out. But again, we had decent soils here. This was a, another poor parking lot. Now this was Aaron Arios, fill title wetlands. So this fire retention cell in the parking island is a long linear system. It has that underdrain in the bottom. So it's a water quality system, but it's not a volume reduction system. But they really, I wanted to do a windmill here and the town was like, we really want a fire retention with plants. I was like, okay, we can do that, you know? So, you know, we designed these. So these will probably go out to bid sometime this year. So maybe in a year we'll have great case study pictures. So, but you know, these are the types of details for these systems, you know, cross sections, you know, to show soil layers and where everything is. You know, you need to put this amount of information on the plan so that the contractors understand what they're building. But also that the commission sees what the site conditions are going forward. This was in the borough of Stonington, which is different. This is a little paved section of a road. Two roads came together at a corner. And it went down the stairs and went over Metro North. So again, good soils. So we're doing two fire retention cells with an overflow pipe from one to the other. And we're gonna make it all green. We're gonna get rid of about a quarter acre pavement. It's not huge, but you know, it's a green space. So. And then there's a D O T parking lot that actually D O T is letting the town do lid retrofits in, in this parking lot. And we have a drainage pipe that actually runs diagonally from the lower left up. So instead of one big fire retention cell, I actually have two of them. They're at the same elevation, but I couldn't connect them because of this drainage pipe right in the middle of them. So again, you know, it gets very creative, you know, in these systems. Now this one is out Waterford. Now that line for the little point on it's wetlands boundary. So the engineer here, the left portion of this is a fire retention cell and then it's a detention basin on the right. The problem is, is the line, it's kind of wavy there in the second one down. That's the seasonal groundwater. This engineer is designing the system where the top of the media is below seasonal groundwater. It's not gonna ever infiltrate. And yet the town was okay with this. But the town doesn't have an engineering consultant and.
The town doesn't have Tim. Tim would never let that happen.
I refer to engineering.
Yeah.
If you had the manual, it would be obvious. Well, here's your seasonal groundwater table. Where's your twelve-inch separation? There isn't any, you know? Pick it back. Very simple. So again, they're also gonna use it as a temporary sediment basin. You do not use lid practices for temporary sediment basins, period. Because you will clog the soil and you can never restore them. And even if you dug everything out, now you're discharged in stormwater, where your plants are established. All you need is get a muddy hole out of it. So. This is one in Greenwich. This is the problem with peak rate on top of fire retention. Ninety-six hours, it stayed ponded after a half inch rainstorm. That's bad.
Right.
Here's one, I get it by the same engineer will be named.
Hard name. We should know who he is.
During construction.
Maybe we should know who he is.
This is, oh, well, this is Deandrea. Out of Greenwich, Rock of Deandria's office.
These things happen.
They do. So permeable pavement, we have less slides. There's different types. You have porous asphalt, concrete, interlocking favors. P is overall investigation practices. One of the issues, however, we did, I mean, this new town is, they consider this a hardscape. So even though it infiltrates, they consider it site coverage. It can be problematic. So sometimes regulations have to catch up with the technology.
Yeah, we had asked Tim really, it, it really was only concerning driveways that we were dealing with, especially up in Greenfield Hill. And we just, I thought, it's like, oh, okay, it's, you know, pervious pavement, it'll help. I don't, I don't need that whole cement or, or, you know, asphalt area. But you know, if you have that information for Tim, you know, but I think it sounds like it, these fire retention things might be more.
They'd be more effective.
For us.
Field till is probably hardpan soil.
Yeah.
Most part. And that wouldn't be suitable for permeable pavement because of that, the high ground. So the key with permeable pavement or porous concrete is plain brown layer, they're sand and gravel. That's your water treatment system. But if you have permeable asphalt where you just have layers of stone. That's not doing any more quality benefit at all. Sand and gravel layer is what does it.
Gotcha.
So this is, actually this is Garden Homes at the end of Fairchild. This was the second application. This is during a rainstorm. There's no water on it. Now, this was taken at the entrance, the entrance up into that site was standard asphalt. The rest of the parking lot was permeable. It's raining. Look at the water on standard asphalt. Look at it on porous.
Right.
Nothing. It works that well. So this was going back to the Milford one.
Yeah, but wait a second. There's a very, very high water table on that street.
Well, actually, the site where Fairchild, where Garden Homes built, this was, the road is much lower. This site was raised, it was filled like fifty years ago, about forty feet of fill next to the Rooster River. So this site is way above the river actually, but it was all filled prior to adoption of wetlands rigs.
But that, I, I, I approved that application and that road, actually a woman died from flooding on that road. She drowned.
The road, the road is low, yeah. And the river where it bends is not that far below the road.
That's, that's the end of a, they got one on Fairchild, one on Berwick. You got two of them built though.
Yeah, this is right at the end against I ninety-five, but yes, you're absolutely right. The road relative to the river is low. So if the Rooster River floods, the road itself floods. No doubt about it.
So why would we put permeable pavement there if it's such a high water table there?
Well, it's not a high water table. Flooding does not constitute a high water table. This is.
Said the water table is very high there.
Well, this is, the site itself is much higher than the road. The driveway probably comes up six or seven feet from Fairchild to get to the parking lot itself. So the site itself is much higher than the road. So this is going back to the Milford one. What we learned here was a lesson learned, like they'd already put in the islands and it made it a little more difficult for a paving guy. So what I would do in the future is not put my islands in. I would just do long runs of asphalt and I would cut my islands back out as far as that goes. That's a close up of permeable asphalt. I like to equate it to a K-Ro popcorn ball. The K-Ro syrup holds popcorn in place, but you have all the void space. That's pretty much what this is. This is two days after, it's lightly raining. I ran down there, there wasn't a drop of water on it. As far as that goes. Then the same day, this was December fourteen, an inch and a little over an inch rainfall event. And it was downpouring when I got here and I was standing on the curb on the low side. So the water was running down about a three percent slope. But as the intensity of the rainfall stopped, that drying circle on the right just expanded. You could literally watch the water infiltrate. And as it moved down the slope, it was infiltrating because I'm standing on the curb. The water never got to the curb. So it infiltrated on the way down. So again, you know, the systems work, but you know, there's, U N H has a full spec for the material, how to put it in, the whole nine yards. And that's what you need to follow.
How about snow and ice on those, Steve?
Oh, they, well, the plow guys plow it normally.
But it will, it'll still accumulate because.
A little bit, but what U N H found is, you know, because it's, the kernels may freeze up, but the void space doesn't. And if it warms up, the ice or snow melts and simply infiltrates right in there. And U N H also found that without snow, if you get a lot of cold weather, the frost will go down about a foot from the surface. But a half inch of rain or less, the frost comes right out of the permeable section. So it works well, but they have, at their research center, they have one half a lot is standard asphalt, half is permeable. And they plow it the same way. And you know, if you're up there on a sunny day, you know, the other lots got ice on it and the permeable pavement's, you know, all exposed and dry.
Just getting back to the discussion we had on the application with application of salt.
Yeah.
To the pervious pavement and.
Put down about twenty, seventy-five percent less. So with, because it, it melts and goes down, you, you can reduce your salt by seventy-five percent on permeable asphalt. The problem with chlorides in general is they don't come out of the environment at all. Fire retention don't move, remove them. The gravel layer here doesn't remove them. The only thing you can do is put less of them down. That's the only.
What happens if we do a full shopping center and you have permeable? And the landscaper's gonna come in at two o'clock in the morning, the plow guy's gonna come in two o'clock, he's gonna plow and he's gonna salt every time.
Well, permeable asphalt is suitable for the parking spaces, not the travel lane in between them. Because the, you know, move, the, most travel lanes are gonna get some truck traffic. So it's not meant for heavy vehicle loading. It's meant for lighter loading. So.
So we don't put that in super, super stop and shop then?
No, you could do the parking spaces, but the aisle, I think I may have a case study from New Hampshire that is in here that I can show you. But the, the aisle, the travel aisle should be standard asphalt. Parking spaces could be permeable. And you know, you just have to, again, the owner has to tell his landscape guys, look, the standard asphalt, you can put salt.
Yeah, but you know how that goes. Number one. And number two, trying to build it with two different asphalt's, rocky spots is gonna be a nightmare.
It actually isn't. It actually works pretty well. But it is, it is, maintenance is a problem. That's why you need to put this in where the owner is gonna buy into all the maintenance that's required to do it. It, you know, and that's why I don't recommend for homeowners because it's just not gonna happen on the homeowner's scale. Oh yeah, here's this one. This is up in Greenland, New Hampshire, right before you hit ports, but this was a brownfield site. They wanted to redevelop, but it's also drainage of the Great Bay and they have T M P Ls for the Great Bay. So the initial plan was getting beat up. It was Conservation Law Foundation, Vermont was opposing it. So the developer reached out to U N H to get involved with this and they did. So basically what they did is the lower portion of the park is kind of green on gray. That's porous asphalt. This whole site is underlaid by a forty mil impermeable liner and the storage layer under the gravel is about, under the pavement's about eight foot thick. So it's a big storage system, but on the left is a gravel wetlands and that goes into the Great Bay. So in this case, they, you can see the darker asphalt is porous, the light gray is standard. And what it, what they have, go to these pictures, is the standard asphalt drains onto the permeable asphalt. It's called run-on. And the water infiltrates through the porous asphalt, hits the underdrain system and then goes to that gravel wetland before going out to the Great Bay. They've now been monitoring this. They've now been monitoring this, picture on the upper left is looking upstream in the gravel wetland system, and then the upper right is going out towards the Great Bay. What they've actually found is the water coming out of the gravel wetlands is cleaner than the receiving water. So, but, you know, this was a great case study, because the town wanted the project, they wanted the redevelopment, but they didn't wanna adversely affect the Great Bay, they got to have their cake and eat it too. Costs here, you know, this is a pretty substantial project, I mean, it's eighteen million dollars. But they save, you know, you know, close to a million dollars, you know, using the porous asphalt, and they also got rid of a lot of large piping. Now, there's still, I think they eliminated ten or twenty thousand linear feet of pipe, so, you know, pretty substantial.
So where was the cost in the asphalt?
Uh, well, in this case, deep gravel layer, you know, eight foot deep, an inch and a quarter stone over, so, it's not cheap. Here's another porous pavement video. You know, standard asphalt is on the left-hand side, porous system, which is paver stones is on the right. Again, it shows how these systems work, and this takes the mystery out of it, or, you know, commissions and, you know, you know, homeowners or, you know, engineers, because you can see how these systems, you know, basically work.
Water, but if water enters and freezes, doesn't it expand and deteriorate?
Drink, the circus is so permeable, it's, it's water wets right down through it, so it doesn't freeze and pop it enough. Now, this one is the Westport Train Station, this is a DMD project. Train stations, the upper left, the left-hand picture, so all the traffic has to come in this lane and go around to get up there. They put the asphalt down while they're in the middle of building the train station, and it got clogged, and you can see the right-hand picture, the water's not infiltrating. And you can see on the left, you can see a lot of brown in there, and that's what it looks like, that's how clogged it got. Now, when it's this clogged, you have to get a regenerative back, which is basically a power washer backer. It has a power washing system under the truck with high-pressure water and a sealed backing unit.
Four months.
Basically blow the stuff loose and then suck it up, and you might have to do it two or three times to get all the sediment out. But this was less than a year for this to fail.
From what?
From clogging.
I know, but what's the clogging from, sand?
Just the construction vehicles in and out. There was no winter sand, it was all the construction vehicles and cars just bringing sand from the road into it.
So the pervious pavement should be done more towards the end of the project, whereas the...
Bioretention goes in early, pavement is the last thing, a Garden Homes project, that was when we did the Milford one, which was first, the only vehicles that went in there after the permeable pavement were pickup trucks. Same thing with Fairchild, so permeable pavement's the last thing, absolutely, bioretention early, pavement last.
Well, what was your, just to remind me, and the, the, the application's closed now, what was your argument against High Street with their permeable pavement?
The soils on that site not suitable for permeable pavement. They weren't a Class A or B soil, they did not prove that that underlying soil layer would actually infiltrate the water, which is the whole intent of permeable pavement. That was a fundamental arg, you know, my point on that site was, it's not suitable for the lid systems they proposed.
So the applicant's basically telling us that they're gonna use permeable pavement, and it's gonna be absorbed, and then it's damp, but unless we ask what the soil conditions are, it could be just fruitless.
Yeah, you have to have the soil testing, and you also have to, you know, model the system. You know, these are storage systems, you have layers, it has void space, so there's storage in them. You also have that infiltration rate, so you build a layer cake of storage, and then you model your infiltration rate with the rainfall event. And you show that that water will actually infiltrate, and it will tell you with hydrocat, it will tell you what the water surface is within that system, just like a detention pond. And so you have to model these systems, you just can't put it on the plan and say, oh, it's gonna infiltrate.
Well, that's what the attorneys do when they present it to the various town boards.
Well, I know they do, that's why, you know, that's why I tried with the fact sheets of giving you enough information to, on future applications.
Right.
You can ask those questions, but you've gotta have the test pits, and you've gotta have, I think the DEP manual says one for every five thousand square feet, but on High Street, there were highly variable soil conditions based on their soil logs. That, to me, tells me, I gotta do more soil testing, because I've got something that's odd here. If this is really well-drained here, and thirty feet over here is crappy dirt, something's going on here, I need to know more, figure that out. And there wasn't enough data to know that, but, you know, this, based on their test pits, that site was not suitable for infiltration at all. And that's why those systems wouldn't work, and my comments on that, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Have you ever put, ever put one of these in next to a, an artificial turf field? Actually, no, artif- artificial turf fields actually kind of are almost like permeable pavement, in that, you know...
Some's underneath them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the last thing.
Give Tim this.
No, no, it was the last thing.
Actually, if you have two seconds.
I mean, this is one of the plant, plants around. Grass me out of oil.
Oh, yeah.
Artificial turf fields, I hate them. Burn them.
If you go to YouTube and type in porous concrete UNH, this is a porous concrete lot on sandy soils, they dumped fifteen hundred gallons of water out, basically in ten or fifteen minutes, it all fully infiltrates, so. Yeah, different systems, but I'll provide Tim with the...
Thank you so much, that was really great.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.